But, meeting is called to order. Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our command. And to be visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first on our agenda is the approval of our current agenda. I believe we have some additions.
Yeah, I have some additions. Somebody else have some additions before me, or?
Well, once you have yours, I'll determine if I have one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'd like to address, we pulled out Marcus's engineering bill last month. And looked at that, I'd like to add that as an additional item, because I, or else.
That's number six.
Is it number six?
Correct.
Six where? I don't see a six.
City business.
On the amended agenda that I handed out? Hold the meeting, yep?
Okay, fine. Thank you. So, that's a number six, and then I would like to add a discussion of the city planner RFP. And in addition to that, I would like to add a discussion of our variance process. And particularly of two variances, or two most recent variances. So, two additions from me.
So, number eight will be city planner RFP.
Yeah.
And number nine under city business will be variance procedure. Kathy?
I think mine actually falls under the tree plan, so.
Perfect. And Scott, did you have something you wanted to add as well? Are we all set?
All set.
Great. And can I get a motion to accept our agenda with the additions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll open the public forum. Barton, would you like to speak?
No, I'm just here to observe.
Okay, thank you Barton. Closing the public forum since no one would like to speak. There are no presentations this evening. So, we're on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull out of the consent agenda? Hearing none? Can I have a motion to approve it? So moved, Kathy. Second?
Second, Ryan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. So, we are on to staff reports. And the first up is our city administrator, Scott Hildebrand.
Mine is pretty brief. I think everything's handled in the business.
Okay. Um, city engineer then. Hi, Marcus.
Hello everyone. Alright. So, first thing on six ninety-seven hall, I have, a resident reached out a couple of weeks ago. He's looking at redoing his driveway, and he was asking about the culverts underneath. After talking with John Manship, they're owned by the city. So, the resident's wondering if he can remove them, which I kinda already told him that we can't remove them. And then, if we want to replace them before. So, I'm coming to council there today to see if we want to, at least, I think it'd be worth cleaning them out at the very least. They're full of sediment and two sides, you can't, there's two culverts, sorry, two culverts, he has two driveways. And one side of each culvert is open. It's still, I mean, they're both pretty full. They could probably use a good cleaning. And then, I can't really tell if it's in good shape or not, just because of how full they are. So, if the city's interested in cleaning that out, I can start reaching out to John to see if he can line someone up, or if he wants someone else to. That's just kinda my thought, or question, I guess, to the council, is if we want to look at the culvert at all while he's tearing up his driveway, or if we want to just leave it alone, let him pave over the culverts.
Well, is there a bear living in there, or?
It's a, the ditch hasn't been maintained in quite a while, so it's just been full of sediment.
It's, it sounds like your recommendation is to do something.
We want to probably at least clean them. I don't necessarily think that we need to replace them. But it'd be good worth cleaning it, just to see what kind of condition it is in before he puts new asphalt on top.
How much, I mean, cleaning doesn't sound expensive.
Uh, yeah, a couple hundred bucks, I would say. I really don't know. I don't know who.
Can we just, what if, what if I just move to authorize five hundred bucks for the city to clean it?
Is that a vacuum truck, or does it have to be augured out, or?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure who the city normally works with, with that.
I mean, to clean.
Yeah, usually it's like a vac or something like, usually it's like a vac truck, or something like that.
Did we already have the vacuum truck come through and do the cleaning of the gardens, or the other? So, maybe we should add that to the list for them.
Yeah. The one question I would have is if, once they're cleaned out, you find that one, especially the one to the east, looks a little crushed.
Yeah.
I don't know, could you come back and just let us know if you need to replace it?
Yep, yep. I think that that would be worth a future discussion, once you kinda get an idea of what it actually looks like, so.
Have you inspected them at all?
Yeah, yep.
You did?
Yep, and they're so covered up. You can kinda, I looked through them even just tonight, and if you look through it, it's half full with sediment in the one, and the other one is just so, um, there's so much stuff around it that you can't even see inside it, so.
I assume these aren't our only culverts?
No.
Okay, so what is the city's procedure for maintaining these culverts?
Yeah, they're supposed to be, well, culverts seem to kinda get forgotten about, but storm sewer in general is supposed to be inspected. At least annually, if not, like, at the start, in the spring, and then right before winter. That's usually what's supposed to happen, but it, there's been times where it seems like it's getting, it's been getting forgotten.
Who, who inspects those?
I think it's John Manship, but that's what I understood.
Weren't we talking about a maintenance schedule for the city recently?
Yeah, yep. We were just talking about it, I think, this spring.
We are going to, I think that's gonna be part of our discussion during budgeting time. We do need to get on a schedule, but we have to budget for it.
Well, we have to budget, but that doesn't mean we can't.
Well, you have to budget for it, since it's not been budgeted for before.
Well, is this, if, if this is already something that's supposed to be done by the water superintendent, and it hasn't been done? And are we, like, paying for something that we're not getting?
Good question.
We, we can look at John's contract. I don't think it probably says in there, and he does a bunch of stuff as hourly work. Like, turning the water faucets on and off. I would, my guess would be it's hourly work, but I don't know for certain that it's not listed in his. His contract is very brief and sort of contract-like.
Okay.
So, that, that would be good to check into, but Marcus, just educate me. So, if we have culverts that are plugged up, what's the impact to the quality of the roads? To runoff, or to anything?
Yeah, the, the main concern, I guess, is, is if you have flooding issues, and I kinda talked to them about it. It doesn't sound like they really have water issues or anything like that, so. Once, once it's cleaned out soon, I mean downstream, it, I was gonna, I guess, reiterate this to John, I guess, but it'd be worth checking everything downstream to make sure there's no clogs, because once you start sending water down there.
Exactly.
Yeah, you, you might run into issues there, but that's, that's your main thing. Roadwise, as long as you're not flooding on the road constantly, which we haven't been, from my understanding, and I haven't seen it yet. That'd be the only issue roadwise, so.
To me, what we should be saying is, we need to put together a plan to get all of these cleaned.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Because if we're cleaning one, and it creates more problems downstream, then we're just gonna be.
Culverts generally need a lot less maintenance than what any other storm sewer does, which is probably why it's just, it's one of those things that you drive by, you see them, but you don't particularly just go and actually inspect them, so.
I think the storm sewer that collects that water, that culvert, as it runs down to the lake.
Yep, yep.
Runs over to Halls Marsh, and that's the one that flooded this spring, so that may have been cleaned out already, too.
Yep.
Storm sewer.
Yep. Yeah, I was kinda.
We should be okay.
I think we should be okay there.
Yeah. Anyway, I like your idea, Ryan. Did you want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. Do we want to expand it to include more storm sewers? Or do we want to do any research on the additional state before we move forward, or do we want to just start with this one? Do you hire us, I guess you have Manship do it, if he does it.
I'd say, I, I think my recommendation would just be have Manship go and just check any other culverts, and then report back to the city on that. These two culverts specifically, I know he was trying to get this driveway paved.
So, let's.
In the recent future, so.
I'll do this. Let's authorize five hundred dollars to clean this culvert and any additional culverts. And if the amount exceeds five hundred dollars, let's have staff request additional funds for additional clearing of culverts.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Well, hold on. I don't, I, I'm okay with the Band-Aid for now, for five hundred bucks. But I think we need to have, like, I don't want to kick this can, can down the road anymore. We have to have some sort of maintenance plan.
Right. But we need to take care of him, so you can get this driveway done.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, like, so what's our plan for the maintenance? Plan?
We'll have to sit down in our workshop.
I, I believe we also had already approved vacuum out the storm sewers this year. So, if those haven't been done yet, if, if it requires vacuuming, that should be done anyway. That we had already requested when they were doing the leaf removal, I think, uh, I think that, oh, street sweeping. And vacuuming was all in the same budget. We had requested it in April, I think.
Yeah, let me follow up with Teresa on that.
Okay. Because if that's already been done, then the storm sewers should be clean, because they were supposed to have vacuumed those out, in which case it should just be the culverts that need it. But if the storm sewers have not been done, we need to follow up when, when that's happening.
Okay.
So, maybe I would amend your motion a little bit, Ryan, and say, we approve five hundred dollars. We want the culverts that you're talking about cleaned out, as well as the culverts that are downstream from them inspected. And then we want to have Manship, or whoever, look at the remaining culverts, and get back to us about what needs to be cleaned. And then it goes on a maintenance schedule.
I accept the amendment, as long as we get it all, get something close to that down.
You know, I, I do think it might be helpful, as a standing agenda, to bring forward what the maintenance schedule was for the previous month to the council, and to see if, in fact, it's been done.
If we have one, that's a good idea.
It's a good thing to discuss during a work session.
I, I agree, that's a work session.
We should be looking at this stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's a plan that exists, so.
Time to start one.
Right.
Alright, can I get a second on the amended motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Let's get that bear back.
Do we, do we need to put a timeframe around, around that motion? I mean, we're proving it, but I don't want it to be ten months out, so.
Well, okay, I think we, could we just expect that to be done over the next month, do you think, Scott?
If he gets one of his driveway done, he's gonna want it sooner than.
He's gonna want it within.
I know John was over there, maybe a week ago, or two weeks ago, looking at it, too. So, he, he's already aware of it, it's just a matter of.
He might not be available.
Yeah.
So, we might have to find someone.
Okay, okay.
We'll work on it.
So, the understanding is, it will be as soon as possible?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Lift station wise, that's, I think that's the next one. Excel is gonna be tomorrow, we're gonna start seeing traffic control out on the street. Thursday, Excel is gonna start relocating the gas services around the generator, one that goes to the generator. And then there's two houses that run right next to it. That'll start on Thursday. Plan is to be done around Friday. Ideally, we, we did see the right-of-way permit coming through today for Excel, so they are working on it. And then, come Monday, Henshaw's plans to start bringing in equipment and everything else. So, it'll be, you'll start seeing some holes being dug next week. Any questions with that so far? Okay, so, they did request, oh, notices have been gone, gone out. There's one notice before they pushed the schedule back. I included the notice that, most recently, has been sent out to them. And then I'll send someone out on Thursday, just to give them residents right there a heads up, because I've had a couple of questions on it. And I think everyone's squared away now, but in case, we'll have someone out there.
Yeah, I had a question today from our mail, mail carrier. He was wondering where the mailboxes are going to be put, and what day that might be happening.
Good question. My, I'll confirm that, but I would imagine it's gonna be on Monday.
Okay.
So.
I'll tell him to look for it.
And then we do, oh, I guess it's not, it wasn't included in this. There is a, it's gonna be kind of over by the, where the, the lake access is, where the park is across the road.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, I believe, there's a map. I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
To you guys.
Marcus, in the past one, you've done these for other cities. Are residents impacted in unexpected ways? Are there things that we should be thinking ahead about? Other than traffic and mail and things like that? I mean, does water turn off for days unexpectedly? What, what are some of the?
Yeah, so, in some projects, like a, for redoing the, the street and stuff, then, yeah, you'll have some of that. In this case, the, the only thing that would be unexpected is, is when we're digging in the new lift station, is if the water main literally falls apart in a hole. The plan is not to shut the water main down, or anything like that. That would be the only thing that could, like, I'm not gonna say it's not a possibility, because we don't know what's down there until we dig it up. But, it shouldn't happen. There's gonna be sheetings everywhere. It's gonna be a very, it'll look like a big hole, but it, it's significantly smaller than what it could be. But otherwise, this'll be, this is generally gonna be a pretty fast process. Couple of things that we usually get every year, and it won't affect, for this project, is irrigation that, that sometimes gets hit, if that's right next to the road, visible dog fences, people wondering when to mow grass, or if they can, stuff like that. How they, how they should get around, stuff like that. And we, we'll have a guy on, on site most of the time, just to help kind of with those questions, and stuff like that. So, generally, we're the main contact for any residents like that, just to kinda keep that separation between the contractor, keep working while they have, if they have questions, they come to us. If the residents, council members, anything like that, come to us, just to be the middleman.
And if something were to go bad, we have a process for informing the mayor and communicating.
Yeah, yeah, if there's an emergency, I mean, it'll go out immediately. We'll start door knocking, hey, just saying all this is going on for the people that are affected immediately. White Bear Township's already in, in the knowledge on when it's starting, and the generator's gonna be up, running. But, we're not, we're not bypassing, well, we are, but we're not. It should be a very minimal project, if that makes sense.
For, for somebody who does much bigger projects, I'm sure, I mean.
It'll, it'll look like there's a lot going on, but in the scheme of things, this'll be a very fast process. By the end of the month, I'm hoping everything will be back to normal.
If, I, and I, I guess I want to just comment, I know there's a lot of information up on social media, and. Would it, if I put together a little email to send out, kinda condensing some of that information for residents, could I just pass that along to, I don't know, do you or Teresa do the email, and you could just send that out to the city? Okay, that would, I think that would be good, just to get something out, and I'm willing to kinda push the words toward each other, so, okay.
Does the road close starting tomorrow, or is that?
It'd be starting on Thursday. So, the signs go out tomorrow, just so people can start seeing it.
Not changing the other lane to be both directions? I don't think it's wide enough, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a turnaround at this point?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, are we putting a sign up at the top of Wildwood, on the far side, on both sides, so people don't jump on that road? Or at Cedar?
There'll be a, a couple of signs, but it won't be a full sign detour around.
It only would shut going, is it north?
It'd be, yeah, east, eastbound, or southbound, whichever way you want to look at a map.
Going towards White Bear. No.
Going towards Montomede.
So.
Going towards Montomede.
Going towards your house.
Oh, okay. Alright. I was taking that as not the northbound lane. Alright.
Yeah, it's kinda.
So then we should put a sign up at Wildwood, so people don't try and use it as a cut-through? Because they will get partway down, and then have to turn around, and that will make them even faster going up the, backwards. And there is not a, there's no road in between there and the other to turn around either?
No.
Okay.
But, the part of, that is shut down, the residents, will be able to drive that back, that live right there, will be able to drive that backwards, to be able to have access to their driveways.
I'm not worried about those people, so.
The guy who, it sounds, sounds like it affects the most, he's called me a couple of times, and he should be squared away. The one that lives right there, so, on the opposite side.
Any more questions for Marcus on that?
Otherwise, yeah, Henshaw's is asking to pay for materials in this. So, I've, I call it pay app one, but it's the first pay request. And then I also included the invoice, so if council's okay with paying this tonight. I'm not exactly sure if we'll be able to just have one more pay request. If it, it gets approved tonight, Nancy is also working on getting everything ready to be submitted to the EPA, which will then, will then send to the city for final signatures, and then send over there. And then they'll kinda get that ball rolling to get payment from the EPA.
I have a quick question on the bill. On that, it has taxes on there. As a city, are we tax exempt? But does it not apply because they're buying supplies?
It does, I'm, I'm not, I guess, I don't think it applies because we're not the one buying the supplies. But I, I'll verify that.
Okay.
So, just so everybody understands, out there in Birchwood, do we pay that? Does Birchwood pay the hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars upfront, and then get reimbursed from the EPA? Or does it go directly to the EPA?
EPA will pay the eighty percent directly, and then, well, it'll come to the city, and then the city will then pay that.
Okay.
The ci, the city will pay the twenty percent, and then we'll have to look at the, how the separation with additional Rice Creek Watershed District grant goes. Because they'll, part of you guys' twenty percent will be in that. I don't remember the exact breakdown. I wanna say it was like fifty-fifty for the EPA, or the Rice Creek Watershed District grant, but.
So, ours is about ten percent in there?
I wanna say, yeah. The final documentation will have all that laid out, because it has to be all spelled out to the EPA when we send that out. But the EPA grant, you can draw, withdraw as these pay requests come in.
Okay, great. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the pay, once you check the tax thing.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Marcus, sorry.
Hearing none, motion passes.
Before you sit down, is there anything on the agenda regarding approving the roadwork, the city roadwork?
That's what I was wondering, too.
Okay. Do we want to kind of, can we just kinda stick that in? There's, Alan doesn't mind? Can we, can we add that into the agenda, Alan, to approve the roadwork, or?
What extent would we be talking?
That contract that you sent out, does that qualify as the invoices?
No.
We have a special meeting and approve.
Okay, I mean, I've.
That's fine.
I don't want to be the one delaying it anymore, so. Okay. What's your, is your opinion that we should probably not do that tonight, Alan, or? Yes, okay.
I mean, it should've been added, obviously, at the beginning.
Yeah, okay.
If it can wait. Just because, I mean, it's a, obviously, an interest to a lot of folks.
Yeah, okay.
Is the notice three days and a special meeting?
If you need it.
Well, we need it, because we need to get this contract approved, so we can get the roads fixed this summer.
If we need it, I mean, we can still do it this week, but.
You need only three, probably.
We can notice it tomorrow and have it Friday?
That would be.
Have it Saturday.
Be quiet, you can do it Saturday, Sunday, or Monday.
Day of posting doesn't count, and the day of meeting does, so that's the rule.
We're calling a special meeting, just so all of you know. Just let's figure out what day.
Just push it on to Monday. It's not gonna make a big difference. Saturday's your first available, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Invoices? I think that's all I had, that's all I had, because a, a pay app is what we just got approved, so.
I guess, are you gonna, I was wondering about the Bolton and Mink invoices?
Yeah, we can, is that, we can, I'll wait, if that's.
Unless we're gonna do that now and send it, send the guy home.
We're done with, that's okay, we're done with the staff reports. We're moving on to city business. We can move.
Okay.
Move Marcus up. So, review, review number six. Review on possible approval of Bolton and Mink invoices.
I just have one kinda quick question, is, you know, sometimes these resolutions allocate explicit amounts of funding and explicit numbers of hours to these things. And just as a general question, how are we kinda making sure we stay within those allocations? Are you being, like, is that something you kinda stick to, Marcus, where you're made aware of those?
After your last council meeting, I did look into, like, where we went off on that. And, so, with, right after that first open house meeting, when we got the second one scheduled, I didn't go to the council meeting that next day, and I wouldn't have had time to bring it up to, or to bring it on the agenda anyways. But, so that's kinda where my, it wasn't my fault, I, I didn't get a chance to look at it and bring it up to council, but.
Okay, and it's not a big deal. It's just a little bit of.
Yeah.
Doing oversight, so.
Yeah, that'd be my, that'd be my mistake, so. Yep.
Okay, alright, well, with that, I will move to approve the invoice. Bolton and Mink invoice that was not approved last month.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second. Kathy?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Goodnight, Marcus.
Thanks for all your work.
Just so I'm clear, that was item six.
Number six, yeah.
That was up.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on to number one, under city business. Discussion regarding tree plan. So, a resident had come in, I don't know, last week, I believe it was, to ask about, well, actually, let me back up. Before I even get started on this, I want to give a big shout-out and thank you to you, Kathy, for heading up the community club efforts for the parade.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you for doing all of that. Thank you to Juliette for doing the balloons and helping me with that. I know you guys had an early day. I believe Cynthia Tomlinson was involved in that also.
Yes.
That day. Mary Cahill got the food, right?
Yep.
Michaeline did the band. Somebody named Dale was driving the grand marshals.
Yep, Dale was driving.
Awesome.
Yep. Noel helped with flags. Suzie helped with balloons. We had, I'm sorry, I can't remember their name. There was a mother and daughter who helped hand out food. Jim Rydeen helped with food. We had Mike and Mary. Can't remember your last name, so sorry, helped with balloons. We had, oh, let's see.
Sarah Nefah put up the banners.
Sarah Nefah put up the. Sarah Nefah put up the banners, Hope Monet got candy and food, um, the Luns, John and Kelly helped with the games, and, um, Ryan helped with putting up flags.
Isleys and the Klimps.
And the Klimps.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a community effort in general.
I just thought it was wonderful, and just to see everybody work together, and the turnout was awesome.
Yeah, it was our longest parade, it was twenty minutes, which is five minutes longer than last year, we had a hundred and fifty bicycles in that, so it was pretty awesome.
It was. What a great community event, so thank you. All right, now, on to the tree plan.
And every council member was there, I think, right? Every council member was there.
I think so.
I think so.
Okay, so, a resident came in last weekend, asked about what our city's tree plan is, so I thought I'd just summarize it for anybody else who might be interested out there in Birchwood. So, in our budget, we have fifteen thousand dollars for tree removal. In sometime early, like in January, February, Steve Dean and I drove around the city, and we were looking at the trees that the tree inspector from last year had pointed out that were either diseased or dead, and we, at that time, had talked about mostly looking in Polly's Park, about what trees might have to come down before we plant more trees and that. So, I did that with Steve, and then I was speaking also with Jim about it, and Jim asked if he and Ron could have first shot at taking the trees down, since Jim is a city employee, and I said, sure. So, I've been giving, um, Jim trees that we, that they can handle taking down, you know, because they're not climbers like Steve. So, they've been taking things down primarily on Cedar and Hall, along with on that Wildwood Park. So, they're making good progress on that. Um, but this resident that came in earlier last week was talking about, there's two diseased trees, I believe. One was, um, an elm, and one was an oak that needed to be removed, um, right away. So, one, fortunately for us, is in the power lines, so I had called Excel to have them come take one of those down. The other one, um, is on a property that we're not sure who owns, strangely enough. So, I'm not sure how we're going to get that information, I went to the Washington County website, and they don't even have information on it, so.
It's a bonus misting in, uh, land, huh?
It's a mystery.
Where is that one?
Um, that one is between, on Hall Road, between John Lund's house and Max Kirschbaum's house, um, it's the one with the lot that was split.
Okay.
That corner, Max's house, was on a lot that was split.
Oh, that one that's...
It's probably just not updated yet, huh?
Uh, I don't know.
I bet you have to go down to the county to look at the records.
The person who bought that property?
It's not, on the county website, correct.
I'll have Elliot look it up, that's what he does for a living.
Awesome, thank you, that would be six forty Hall. So, as soon as we find out the owners for that one, we can send him a letter and ask them to take that diseased tree down.
See, that one's too far away from the street to be ours, for sure.
It is, yes. Um, then, so after taking care of that, um, I did contact today the tree inspector that we used last year, who told us that he was able to inspect all the trees in the city except for the ones on the right of ways. And he wasn't, he asked for some, um, information about where the right of way is on each street, because all of our streets are different widths, whatever. So, we're working on getting him that information, and as soon as he gets it, he can come out and finish up his job that he started last year.
Okay.
So then we'll have a complete record of all the trees in the city, and where they're located, you know, and then we can decide, well, they mark them as dangerous, or whatever. Um, so, that's where we are on the trees.
Jennifer, will he then send notices to people to take down their trees?
He, I don't know if he will do it, or we will do it instead. As long as we have the information, we can notice the people, yes. By the way, we have really, um, intelligent residents out there who are really happy to help us out, and I'm really, every time I meet somebody new that has, is specialized in something, I'm just so thankful and grateful, so, just wanted to say that. I don't want to say who it is, because I don't want to embarrass it. Very helpful man. Um, so anyway, that's where we are on the trees. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Well, this is the one that I was wanting to chat about, um, that elm specifically is the one. So, that one, I'm not sure if Excel will take down, because it is not in the power line, it is in the line that is going from the power line to a house. So, they might take down the line, but they won't take down the tree typically for that.
I'm at the one on the corner of Wildwood and Lake.
Yeah, and Two Lake is how that one's listed, but yes, so that one...
That's the one I called on, so we'll see.
So, we'll see. Um, if they don't, can we make sure that Steve Dean gets that one down quick? Because that one, it, it looks quite dead, and if it is Dutch elm, that would be a problem.
Yep.
Okay.
Specifically the one I called on. Um, any other questions about that?
That's the only one that, well, I had seen the other tree, but I was pretty sure it was on that property that belonged to the people, the oak.
Yes, and I'm going to call about the one across from you tomorrow, because that's all entangled in the power lines. Um, I don't know, it's across the street from you on Lake.
Which direction? On Two Lake?
On Two Lake, yep. There's a huge tree that's all entangled in the power lines.
I'll have to look at it again.
Yeah, so I'm going to call on that one tomorrow, but, okay. So, that's the tree update. Um, if there's no questions, we can move on to, um...
That one died really fast. That elm died really fast, because it didn't look that bad this spring until just now.
And that's elm, Dutch elm disease, and it's just kind of latent, huh?
It very well could be, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one that spreads through taproots and a beetle as well, depending on, yeah. Well, depending on which version of Dutch elm it is, it could be a beetle, in which case it would be bad news in general, but...
Sounds like a terrible way to die.
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, on that note, Scott, round number two, um, insurance renewal?
We just, it is in your packet, the city, we completed our insurance renewal, there's a little bit of a savings, but obviously, we updated some information with it, so...
Well, thank you for that.
Did we get less coverage that they gave us savings? That seems weird for an insurance company.
I think it's more because there haven't, hasn't been claimed, so, it's history.
All right, well, thank you for working on that. Um, it's back to me about Kurt Feisner.
Do we need to approve the insurance before we go on? It's already done?
For your information.
Okay.
So, regarding Kurt Feisner, I've been looking into funding to do something with that preserve, and I know it needs to run through parks. Um, I know also that you guys are super busy with other projects, but is it all right if I come to your meeting and kind of run through what my ideas are? I have, um, I think I have one entity that will fund part of it already, of the projects I'm thinking of, and there's possibly others out there as well, so...
Excellent.
All right, so I'd like to come talk to you guys, your, your meeting's next Tuesday, right?
Correct.
All right.
Can I ask a question about that, specifically for Alan? So, I'll just give you a little recap, because I think you're, um, you're helping, but, um, we have two council liaisons to the, to the Parks Committee, right?
Yeah, and you'll have to speak up, I'm right under this thing, so I don't hear anything that you're saying.
Oh, I'm gonna have to speak up, okay, uh, is that better? Okay, so, we have two council liaisons to the Parks Committee, if Jen wants to go in and chat with them, do we need to just notice that quick? We probably do, right? Okay.
We noticed that meeting.
We just noticed it as a city council meeting, because you have three city council members together.
It's just a notice of quorum, yep.
A notice of quorum of the city council.
Just an advisory that there may be a quorum.
Yeah, okay, just, just doing my thing.
As Belt and Suspenders, for sure.
Okay, yep, just so, and I just, partly, I, I think just making sure everybody's aware that we, that we have to do that, and thanks, Alan.
If someone just shows up because they wanted to participate or watch, that's more incidental, but when you're actually actively thinking, then definitely do it.
Okay. All right, I'll have Therese send out a notice tomorrow then, and put it on the board.
Just put it on the board quick, yeah.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Um, update regarding the task force. Uh, so, the task force met last week, two weeks ago, on June twenty-sixth. They were given a packet of information, both digitally and also on paper copies, all sorts of information, everything Marcus has given, the city maps. Um, I pulled together a bunch of facts and figures for them to go through, and their task was to come up with questions to clarify both the current roads plan and/or the optional possible water main replacement plan. So, they worked on creating those questions on the twenty-sixth. They were sent to our city administrator, who then forwarded on to Bill, is it Holsec? Is that how you say his last name?
Bill Holsec.
Holsec, yeah. Uh, he had volunteered to take all the questions that were generated and put them into different buckets for different people, because they have questions for Marcus, but they also have questions for Anthony's Village, or Scott, or John Manship. And so, he was going to put those questions together, and then we'll submit them to Marcus to answer. My goal still is to have, once they get those answers back, um, that third meeting then, from those answers, they can formulate a report and recommendations to council.
Um, was there a timeframe for the grant you were looking at?
Um, I think Marcus, I spoke to Marcus about that, and we're not going to be able to get that grant for twenty-sixth, so, we're kind of...
So, it's going to be next year at the earliest?
At the very earliest, it'll be twenty-seven, but, um...
Only if people say that that's the best idea going forward, they just want to be really careful about this grant, there's been no decisions made. It's a possibility out there, but only a possibility, and we will take the input of the community.
Of course, and of course, we're not doing that without funding.
Yep.
I mean...
That too. Without the money.
Anyway, um, so that's where we are with that. Um, did you have any questions, or did you want to add anything, Bridget? Bridget's been attending also.
Uh, last meeting was very productive, people worked well together, they had some really good questions about Ty Schmidt, and, um, the work that's going to be done to dry up the park, and what the impact might be to any roads work that we've got going on. It's like, oh yeah, that's a really good question, so, um, they're, they're catching things like that, which is great.
Um, so their next meeting is this Thursday. And the number five on the city business is a possible July twenty-second work session. What do you guys think about that?
Be out of town. Um, maybe that's an advantage.
Voices are important, Mr. Henshins.
I'll be, I'll be out of town, and I suppose I could phone in, but I think I'll be okay leaving for a week, so...
Do you guys want to look at your calendars? Is everybody available on the twenty-second?
When are you back, Ryan?
Um, the next week I'd be back, I'm out basically just that whole week. So, the thirty-third or something, thirty, twenty-ninth?
We really shouldn't have this on.
It's, you know, it's, it would be okay to hold something without me, too, I mean, I'll gladly attend if I'm in town, but...
We're also planning on a special meeting as well on the fourteenth, in theory? Yeah, the fourteenth for sure. We can do it on the fourteenth, if you guys are available, we can do a special meeting and a work session. Well, that would be a special meeting, but we can do more than one thing. That's a possibility for you.
What day, what day?
That would be Monday.
I've got to look at my calendar.
I'm not available the fourteenth.
Uh, Scott is not available, okay.
If I could, too, just so you guys know, I do have another council meeting on Monday as well, so I won't be able to be here on Monday.
Okay, that's okay, we're just going to approve that contract.
I was saying, yeah.
I guess I have some questions for Marcus about the contract, so, um, sorry.
What about the sixteenth?
Well, you could do the fifteenth if we did it early enough, just has to be in, in, before the Parks Committee.
I can't do the fifteenth either.
What a troublesome person.
I can't do the sixteenth.
Seventeenth?
And Ryan, can you ask your questions publicly of Marcus?
I can do the fifteenth.
For the...
I have a council meeting.
I can, I can ask my questions, if that's okay with Alan, I can ask my, we can, I can ask my questions about the road thing, do we want to finish the work session deal?
Okay.
And then I can ask a question of Marcus about the roads plan, and then it can be approved, it can go on at a later meeting for actual vote. Do you think that would be acceptable, Alan, to ask, ask a question of Marcus about the roads plan without going to a vote tonight?
I think so.
Okay.
It gets recapped, but it's actually addressed for a vote.
Okay.
So, it doesn't look like it's just a vote that's hanging out there, that's the whole idea.
Yeah, I understand that, I'd probably prefer to do it all at once, but I think this is the best we can do here, so...
So, why don't we hold that for council updates part of the agenda?
If you can stick, if you don't mind sticking around.
All right, work session on the twenty-second at six-thirty. Is that all right with everybody? Bridget, can you be there?
Yep.
Ryan? No, Kathy, can you?
I'll be here.
Scott, you said no?
I can be there on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second at six-thirty. All right, twenty-second at six-thirty it is. Um, number seven, discussion impossible approval of hiring Chris Holtzman to handle the city's website and social media updates. Scott, did you want to take that?
So, we've, I guess he's in there, so I'll talk about him. Uh, we've been, uh, talking with Chris Holtzman about handling the city's website updates. He's been posting agendas and information currently, and is learning it quite well. Um, we've talked about, the goal is for information to be handled once a week, so like every Thursday, when the news blast goes out, the website will be updated. Uh, Facebook may have specific updates from there, and ideally, it's something that I believe, uh, Chris is, Chris is able to handle. Uh, what we did discuss, too, is possibly handling this differently than his, his videographer fee, but it would still be a, at, basically at the same rate, just with a different minimum.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
I think it's a great idea.
I'd like to get on a schedule where it's only on Thursdays, that we, only Thursdays, everything gets updated.
Agree.
And that way, everybody, the community can expect. Thursday is when we find out information for the next week, ever, okay?
We wouldn't need any meetings that are on Thursday posted the week before.
Correct.
Yes. And then is that enough time for noticing meetings for Tuesdays? I think it would be, right?
Typically, I'd try and get agendas out by Thursday at the latest.
Do you guys have a question for Chris, you want me to grab him?
Okay, can I get a motion then, to hire Chris to handle the city's website?
So moved.
And social media, correct?
And social media.
So moved.
Moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Chris. Maybe we should have some confetti falling from the sky, huh? Uh-huh, there you go. You're welcome. Uh, city council updates.
Hold on, you still have the two things.
We have two more. Oh, darn, yes, you're right. Yeah, Ryan, you're off to the side here.
Okay, so...
Number eight, city planner RFP.
Yeah, so the council had voted, um, I think in March or April, to put out an RFP for a city planner and invite our current city planner to apply. Um, you know, I think that, one of the things was, we were in some negotiations with our planner. The other thing was, I think that, um, created a, a framework for a planning structure that would, might work better for the city going forward. And so, there was a council meeting and a five-zero council vote to issue an RFP. And so there was a council meeting and a five-zero council vote to issue an RFP. I know we had some kind of staffing issues and that didn't get put out. I'd just like to get an update on, on where we are with that.
It has not been published, it can be...
I think we should, I think we should just move forward with it, is that okay? So...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I will need to modify dates, obviously, but I can do that.
Do you want to just do that? I don't have any problem with you adjusting the dates, obviously they need to be adjusted.
I can, I tell you what, once I make the adjustments, I can at least forward that RFP to the council just for review and then we'll report back in the next council meeting.
Sounds great, so, okay, that's all I have, is just an update there. And then I've got one more item here.
And the next item is variance procedure.
Yeah, I know, I've heard from a lot of residents, several residents, at least one applicant for variance called me up today and was just confused and frustrated with what is going on with these. You know, the planning commission was, as upset as a planning commission can get, I think, with how one of the recent variances was handled. So I think it might be valuable to, in some way, just, you know, I know Ben sent out an email a month or two ago and he has a number of criticisms of our process. What would be involved in just having, while this RFP is ongoing, having, maybe Ben just come in and give us some of his recommendations and get a little bit of information from him on, on what happened with those and kind of see if we can resolve some of these outstanding questions, so. I guess, and what I'd specifically like to ask is for a written report for recommendations on what areas where we need to improve on the Shifsky variance, which is four-twenty, four-twenty-nine Lake Avenue, the Galadowicz variance at one-thirty-one Lake Avenue, and also the Herod matter at whatever their address is. So, do we want to do that? I know we talked about a performance review, is that how we want to do it? Maybe as a closed meeting in that manner, or... Yes.
If I can, real quick. I know the planning commission last, there was scheduling and we didn't have anything on the agenda, so we didn't have planning commission last month. There is a proposal for, here in July, to still have planning commission, go through an evaluation process, kind of the how-to, what you need to approach, what you need to be thinking about. It's information that other planners, other law firms have used and typically share with planning commissions to really help them understand a role. But also being new, it's important to get everybody on the same page. I haven't been part of these variances, but I get the frustration because I've asked multiple times for, give me guidance, X, Y, Z, what happened, and there's no clear guidance. So that's something that is definitely needed and is something that I think we can talk through at a, at a planning commission meeting.
I think it's worth looking at the planning commission. I think they need some guidance, but I don't think, what I see here is applications coming through where somebody other than the city planner is making a determination what codes are met. And I think we really explicitly need to address that. And I don't think it's something the planning commission can address. I would like to see council address that in some manner, so... But boy, do I strongly encourage, I know you're going to meet with the planning commission, and I think that's really fantastic.
To back up your, your opinion, I think we're on the same page, is the planner should be the one making these decisions or the direction, correct?
Great, that's my, that's, I think, what, one of the significant things, I think, I'd like to kind of discuss. So let's, can we, can we just invite Ben in next month and do we need a motion?
So, Scott, two, two variances basically got missed. There was the Galadowicz one where, if I remember correctly, Hankins wanted to do a resolution, we all agreed that a resolution wasn't the proper way to do it, have him reapply, go through it. They met, they basically got that variance granted because it went over sixty days and the city didn't review it. Galadowicz is, is that it?
Galadowicz.
Right? That's, that's what happened?
That's the one-thirty-one.
It's on the lake.
I believe on that one, there were, I want to say six or seven. My understanding is the, they agreed to the requested work, so I'll say six variances were approved, there's one that was left. And from where I've been trying to figure out, is that remaining one is something that is agreed to anyway?
But it wasn't agreed to with a vote, it was granted automatically.
Because we went...
The work in question, the work that the planning commission wanted to be done is something that the Galadowicz has agreed, yes, we will do that.
So you're saying, and, okay, so you, staff made a determination that this should exceed the sixty days?
I believe it did exceed the sixty days, far beyond that, but I step back and when the planning commission wants something done and the person says, yes, I will do that, that, was there an error, yes? But when somebody agrees to the restriction or the, what was requested from the planning commission, then it's a picture battle.
Yeah, so I guess that's not where I'm going, I just want to make sure that, that since the city missed their deadline and we had to grant that variance, that the Galadowicz has got the necessary paperwork to say that those variances were all granted, they're okay to move on with their project and they can make things right with the county, if they have to like go to the county and register that. Did they get that?
I think they're, I think they're always fine with the county and the watershed district.
Okay, so as long as, like...
The DNR.
As long as they're not, their project's not at all hindered and the city's now...
I guess, to me, I want to, I would like to ask the city planner some questions about this because, specifically because that is certainly in conflict with the city code to not hear variances. And I would just like to kind of hear from him on that. So, and I think, and I know otherwise, I also know residents are explicitly asking to be heard on these variances and we're not providing those residents due process when we're not holding hearings on them, so I...
Correct, and that's your reason for the public hearing.
Yep, and so it doesn't look like we did that. I think it would just be good to ask specifically about where we can improve after those two variances, so...
I think the one you mentioned, Shifsky's, that was the retaining wall one?
Yep.
So because the planning commission canceled their meeting, that one was automatically approved because they hit the sixty days for sure. But do we have something in our permitting software that alerts our team downstairs? Well, hold on.
Shifsky's had already been approved, that was a different...
No, that one was...
No, we hadn't approved there.
That one was also automatically approved because it was never brought to the council.
Yep, so that one, it didn't make it to a planning commission and it was, the planning commission...
No, that's not correct, it was two variances.
Two slip by.
Two slip by. And I think we need to understand just what happened with these, you know, so I think there are some significant questions, I don't think we all, we have all the data in front of us, and so I think we need to hear about this, you know, next month if we can have our planner come in, so...
You have a point, there probably are ticklers that can be set.
So I'd, I'd like to make sure that if we have variances that are going to come in that sixty days and we cancel a planning commission meeting, that we are looking at said chart to make sure that we don't have anything like that happen, because I, I believe we can extend it, but we can't, we can't let things automatically go through.
You can, that meeting was extended because after multiple calls, there was nothing that was supposed to be...
And it should have been automatically denied if that, if that's the case for the person, because if, if they haven't brought, brought their permit back to be heard because of a delay on their side, I feel like that's a automatic denial until they bring it again.
I have a request, I know everybody is busy in the city office, but I would love to have a walkthrough of what the process is for bringing forward a variance and to understand what our software is doing, what our people are doing, what the forms look like. Would that be possible?
I would love, I would love that, too, because I don't know that I understand as somebody who ends up accidentally knowing things about this, like I don't understand how it works either. I think it would be great just to have somebody present to us how the whole process works, absolutely.
Right.
And, you know, it is kind of spelled out in the code, but that doesn't tell you everything either, so...
And the various parts, so what our residents...
And that is part of what I plan to present at, again, the next planning commission. But that can be obviously shared with the council as well.
That'd be great. But I would like to have something that I just don't read, that I could ask questions about, that I could see the software. I mean, I really want to understand this because it's such an important process for our residents.
Sure, some more visual learning.
Yes, I have a visual learning.
Nope, perfect.
Thank you.
Didn't you put together a flowchart type thing?
There is a flowchart that we have from our engineer that explains kind of the process they proposed, but I think we would need to have something similar in the city. And maybe we have it, it's just not absolutely explicitly spelled out like that. I mean, something obviously exists because we get it right once in a while, but, you know, we do, you know, we, we get a lot of things right.
So, long story short...
I guess, go ahead, Ryan.
I was going to say, long story short, we need to shore up this process to make sure this doesn't happen again. Two variances that went through, they have everything they need where their projects aren't going to be hampered by the city. So any kind of documentation, we provided to them and we're going to set something up so the city council can better understand what the processes that the city staff does to process building permits and variances.
And Scott...
I've never even seen the software, so just seeing a demo of it would probably help everybody. The whole statute is set up with a series of triggers, right? And they're all triggers that are against government.
And then, set up something with Ben to ask him where we can approve this process and kind of figure out what happened here.
I think the biggest problem, and this is just me editorializing, is you had a bunch of people that weren't familiar with the projects, the process, or anything else related to this kind of government, taking that in and deciding what to do with it. And so it's no fault of theirs because, you know, you don't come into this world knowing about planning and zoning, and so not knowing whether or not it just goes to the building official, whether it goes to Marcus or whether it goes to...
That's one of the issues that I think needs to be very, very much clarified a hundred percent.
That was a great example with the, the Herod, call it the fence wall.
The fence?
Got stuck in this weird space where it's, who's on first. Obviously, we all paid for it.
Should something like that, should all the questionable permits that come in go straight to the planner and then that person can decide where they go next?
There needs to be, and I think it's a discussion, maybe not for tonight, but there absolutely needs to be one, one person responsible, not responsible for knowing everything, but responsible for doing the whole process.
That's a good discussion to have, your planner's really there to make those calls, not necessarily your administrator, but Scott's got more experience in that.
That's right.
Yes, I disagree, I would rather, and this is a process that we've had with, with Therese is, they typically, the application comes in, she does that software, she forwards it to me, and then for me, I would make that determination, and this is the same way it's done in other cities, as to, is it go to the engineer, does it go to, can it be approved right away, or does it go to the planner? Because then it's better that, I'm having a two-way discussion with the planner, with Marcus, or the planner and Marcus, so that everybody's on the same page. And again, with, when you come in new, I'm not making an excuse if something's been hanging out for a year, it's, you're getting different stories from each sides and it's like asking multiple times, guys, what are we doing here?
And so just, you'll invite Ben in next month to, okay, great, that's great. I've, that's all I've got, because I think I've got just some detailed questions.
Okay.
Did you, sorry, I kind of interrupted you, Kathy, did you get to say what you needed to say?
I think I did. I had nothing to add, how about that?
Anything else on the variance procedure? City council updates, does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about?
Well, I have a thank you, but he's, he's left now. Barton Winter has been helping out significantly at the ice rink, if you've been by, he's been removing some rotted out posts for us so that we can replace those. So he's been doing a phenomenal job with that. You've already thanked the community club for their work on the, our seventy-fourth parade, next year's seventy-five, which is pretty awesome. And then Marcus and Alan and I were working on the Preby Lake Outfall Project, that's the project I've been working on since I started on council. I feel like we're getting almost close, so, I know, exciting. So we'll see what they come back with for our current round of questions and then we'll hopefully have something to look at soon.
That'd be awesome. Ryan, you got anything?
Yeah, I just have some, some questions for you, Marcus, on the roads project, and I want to just give a little summary of dredging of the past, maybe, of what happened last year. And so last year, we entered into a contract, did some roadwork on Oak Ridge, and ultimately some residents up there had some driveway flooding occurred. And, and I want to just read the minutes from the December tenth, twenty-twenty-four agenda, read a small section here, because I think that kind of adequately describes what happened in those minutes. And so, in that meeting, and it says, "The council discussed cost and benefits of the options with respect to repairing the road. Engineer Johnson said the hundred thirty thousand dollars is the worst-case scenario. He said to consider adjusting the CIP, our capital improvement roads plan. He said that the driveway and road needed to be, to be adjusted. He said, 'The grade of the road is the same, but wa, the water is being retained at that low spot because the road is smoother.' Engineer Johnson said he thinks that a survey prior to the rework would reduce future problems. Construction cost would be about a hundred thousand dollars and the survey, another thirty thousand. Engineer Johnson said that about five to ten thousand is due to rework and the rest is reshuffling. They talked about possible additional costs to repair other driveways. Engineer Johnson suggested a contract and a bond and a survey going forward and possibly an open house." And I assume that the open house is not a preventive measure, but I just want to ask, I looked at the, and I want to get your take a little bit on this, I looked at the contract and I didn't see, did, did we conduct a survey on this prior to doing it? So we did revise and correct from last year and do a survey.
Yep.
And I didn't see, the one thing I wanted to ask about here is, and obviously we're doing a contract, is a performance bond something the city should be considering?
So, performance bonds, we typically require at a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar project costs with, one, in December when we're looking at it, we weren't exactly sure where that scope was, so at that time I was looking at bonds, because then we had know roughly what, we had that five percent bond already there in case something wrong were to happen. So in, in the contract that isn't in front of you tonight, but will be in a week, it is, has insurance, so I want the insurance route for a few reasons why. If you get close to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, we usually just bid it anyways as precautionary, and I'm talking close as in like a hundred fifty, maybe sometimes a hundred forty thousand if we're really unsure of where price are going to come in. And with that, with bidding, we just bond, it's, it's in it. Issue with bonding is that you kind of eliminate the smaller contractors from hitting it because they don't have the capital upfront to put the bond, the five percent down. And then there's a little bit more just work and bonding, from my experience, smaller contractors that have a hard time understanding what it is and getting the documentation in.
So you're saying, sorry?
So, so for the, with insurance, with the, with what was quoted, the road, as far as the design goes, we're, we're not correcting the roads issues, we're just, we're resolving the, the, we're putting in ditches to resolve the drainage issues while we figure out our plan going forward. So that the drainage issues will be resolved, there'll be a ditch system versus, I mean, there isn't a system to date. But, so as far as a bond goes, we still have that one year, but what we... But what we would be able to pursue would be if there's a pavement issue, like they bring faulty mix and it starts, it starts, um, alligatoring, alligatoring, or breaking up immediately, sorry. Given with that, it would still be an argument because we still have existing pavement underneath because we're just, um, building overlaying it. So the main thing would be, we would be, you know, we didn't do the, the, you guys didn't do the ditch how we acquired it. So in December, we were looking at ripping up all the asphalt and reshaping the road, which would be a different kind of project. And that would be, say, they don't, they don't compact the base hard, hard enough when they're doing that, that could be something that would cause, you know, issues on the pavement. There's more things. That, that's why we, I didn't go the bond route with this one is because it, we went a little bit cheaper as far as the total cost goes.
Is, so, okay, so we're taking out an insurance policy, a performance insurance policy?
We're requesting their insurance policy, yeah.
That they take one out?
Yep.
And then is that not something we did with the previous work? We did not take out such an insurance policy?
We didn't, we didn't require them to send it to us.
So there was, okay. And so is that why we did not make a claim on their policy?
I don't think that there, in, in my opinion, I don't think that there was a claim to be made because the, the road, how it was, like, how it was engineered did not change. And as far as the area that was corrected, the pavement, the pavement was pulled up and corrected, but that, that profile and how it was.
It was to the engineering specification. It was built to the engineering specification. And the engineering specification would have to be violated in order for an insurance claim to be made. Is that what you're saying?
It was put, it was put in to the, how it was engineered in the sixties.
It was a replacement.
Correct.
Okay. And so, okay. And so I guess what I want to just circle back to a little bit is you said when you came in is we had put in a little over a hundred thousand dollars in roadwork. And fortunately, I don't think it materialized to be that much. But we were faced then with potential a hundred thirty thousand dollars in rework cost. Is, is, and I just want to ask, is there anything, are these engineering specifications, are these of sufficient detail to, to know basically what we're getting at the end? It's, is this, these standardized engineering specs so that we know that when we are getting the work done, that we can go back and look at the engineering spec and say, well, this meets the specs or doesn't, or it's like software development? And you just kind of roll the dice, right?
So, I, I was under the understanding that the road was just replaced. There was no additional engineering that went to it. So however the, the road was in the sixties, we just made it look nicer.
Yep. So it, like, the city could have easily went out and, and, and asked, well, in the past, it would have been Shifsky's, hey, go replace this road. If you come back to them, they're, they're going to say it wasn't engineered. Here's our insurance policy, but there, it's going to be a hard argument to make. I guess I can attest, I'll attest to that, but.
And you've got a couple of things forming around here. Your performance bonds and whatnot are just to get the job done. It's not warranty work, so that's not any besmirching of engineering. And Marcus is saying is the engineering is sixty years old. The demography has changed, the landscape has changed. And when you come in and you just put new frosting on, on old engineered road, you get what you get. Without anyone screwing up, you just got a different result.
And I, I guess my fundamental question here is, um, you know, I can go through a detail or two, and I may yet, but is there anything else we should be doing to make sure that the, the city is protected and we are not likely to end up with extraordinary additional costs next, uh, following the work?
I think that there's a lot of stuff that the city could be doing. I think that's part of why we're looking at the water main. We have water issues.
I mean, specifically with respect to approving or not approving this project?
I think as far as the scope of, of the project in front, that will be in front of you guys, that's as much as we can do.
That's, that's your recommendation is basically that this is, okay. So that's my one question. And then I'll, I'll wind it down here, don't worry, but.
Ryan, could I do a follow-on question to this, this replacement?
I have one more question.
Okay.
And I can do it or you can do it. But my, my one, kind of my one last question is, um, I understand that it's not uncommon for there to be some kind of driveway drainage issues after these projects. And even some cities, it sounds like, don't even do surveys as a matter of course. And we may be overprotecting ourselves a little bit. Is it, is it, is there a guideline or an amount of money the city should set aside to do post-job rework just as a matter of course that we should be budgeting for in addition to our current budgets?
So, I guess backing up a little bit, there's different sizes of projects. So there, there are reconstructions. And that is you are replacing, even, even if it's just the road, you're placing the whole road. You're looking at the drainage, how the road flows, how it ties the driveways, where the drainage is going, stuff like that. So that'd be where you're, where engineering is actually fully involved. We're making sure that you guys are meeting every standard, if that makes sense. And then there's the resurfacing project, which would be like what, what this is. Last year's was kind of, well, that's what it was too, because we didn't have any survey and there wasn't engineering. And that even, if the ci, the city could have easily went out. So that would be a, that would be a lesser degree where you guys are trusting your, you, the past engineering on the roads. We're just cer, simply putting makeup on, on the roads to make it look nice.
Makeup on the pig, okay.
And, yeah, I mean, that's all it is. This year's project is.
Lipstick on the pig, that's it, okay.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. It's literally frosting on top of, on the pavement to make it look good to get through the next handful of years.
Okay.
And then there's like the seal coat, which I think is on the docket for next year. Seal coating, crack filling and stuff. And that is preventative maintenance where, you know, potholes are still going to keep coming. You're still going to see aging going on. So that, that's kind of like the different levels. And from my understanding is, is even though we were involved, the city was kind of thinking that, that the engineer is taking care of everything and that, that wasn't the level that, of scope that we were looking at at the time, if that makes sense.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm not sure we necessarily did anything wrong. I just feel like it's worth grilling you a little bit. I don't, I'm not trying to grill you too much, but just to kind of get your professional opinion and expertise that we're doing what you would do in your own community here.
Even, even with next year with just, um, just crack filling and, uh, assuming that's what we do, I think that we still keep some kind of formal contract like this moving forward versus just having a contract to say, what's the number for this? It, it's a lot more formal. We can, you know, it's all more spelled out for if residents have questions, you know, if we want to know what exactly is included in the scope on this stuff. It's just, it's a couple hundred bucks for a lot more clarity.
So here's my question, Marcus, being new to roads. In the situation where we just repaved over a sixty-year infrastructure, did you tell us that there was risk associated with that? Because it's sort of like, we don't know what we don't know, but it seems like then we get bad surprises.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, at that time, I've tried expressing concerns, but no matter who I went to in the city, it's just, as far as city staff goes, it, it just kind of doesn't get a whole lot. And then that, I had the conversation at council meetings, it's, um, it doesn't go a whole, very far. The city kind of has to want to look into these kind of things. I can only make recommendations, if that makes sense.
Here's what I would request as we go forward with this next chapter of roads, which is you come to council and you give us a very, very clear set of what the risks are and what the issues may be, so that we've got our eyes open. We will listen.
A risk assessment.
Yeah, and that's fair.
That's what it's called, risk assessment.
And in reality too, um, I would like to start kind of talking about these projects, like when you guys are starting to do budgeting, which I think starts next month. So that's going to be one of the things I was going to recommend is just starting to get ahead of, ahead and start, you know, being proactive, looking at these projects a year before so we can have those open houses, have time to plan those open houses, budget accordingly, stuff like that. Um, and kind of rather than working, you know, in the spring when everyone's already kind of starting to roll, look at it in the fall and then kind of get through the designs over winter and contractors lined up ahead of time, yeah.
So I, I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable speaking freely to us. I feel like we're all pretty relaxed, so like if, I think you'd be an idiot about something, just.
Yeah, no, I, I do.
Everyone be.
Just assume we know nothing.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, I guess I appreciate what Bridget said. I want to know the risks and the downfalls. And that's why I try to kind of look at those things and look at the contract and ask kind of questions about, what about this, what about that? It's not to.
There are some areas like water main, if it's not, if we're not already budgeting for replacements and sanit, well, sanitary kind of too, but not really. It's hard for, um, a city of your guys' size to hear it in, well, let's just say July, and to ju, adjust your budget so drastically to accom, accommodate it, uh, for next year. It's, it's almost something that you have to start planning ahead of time. So I can tell you, but it, it, it takes, you know, the, the city to fully agree and be on board.
Where, where are we at with those driveways flooding?
Still flooding.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, like, I walked by there and it.
Contract is, hopefully it will be approved, I think, Monday.
At our special meeting.
At the special meeting, so.
And that's for the ditches and the next road project.
Yep, so it'd be, uh, we're resurfacing, um, where we left off and going around the road. And then we're going to cut ditches in for the time being to alleviate the.
But like bigger than the, the shovel marks that are there now?
Bigger than, yeah, the shovels that are in there. Yeah, it'd be a little bit of coordination with the utility companies that are in the ditches to make sure we're not digging up their lines and we're not exposing freezing lines in the winters. So it'll be a little bit of a process, but. Any questions for me?
Um, I guess I'm probably not going to vote on that, but that, um, addresses all my concerns, so thank you.
Yeah.
Or maybe, I guess if it's next week, I probably will vote on it, so, thank you.
I have an update on your tree question for the owners of that property.
Oh.
So, uh, the property is not Six Forty Hall, it's Six Forty Wildwood. That's why you can't find them. Six Forty Wildwood is owned by Deanne and Daniel Berwald, B E R W A L D. And they have that listed as their permanent property address and mailing address. There you go.
A, a deli?
It has a garage on it, so they've purchased it as the mailing address for that. So when the property was subdivided, it does have a building on it. I understand they're planning on to expanding it, but we haven't heard anything from them.
Can you homestead a garage?
They could.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, that's.
Thank you, Elliot.
What a dress, thanks.
But that'd be why you can't find them at that address.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay, cool. Any more council updates?
I have an update on the great work that Lake Links is doing and how they're working with parks. It's just, it's fantastic. So Lake Links, um, was given seventy thousand dollars from Madam Nida to improve the area where people, where Lake Links is. And they had access, so they went to parks and said, what would you guys like us to spend this money on improving the route? Parks said, well, could we ever get more benches along the route? And could we get a water station? And could we get a bike fixing station? And could we get an exercise, um, I, I think, I sent the pictures.
Outdoor exercise equipment?
And we were all doubtful that Lake Links would say yes, but Lake Links said yes. Right, so, um, I think because of that interaction between our two committees, really cool things happened and I just wanted to call the help.
We're getting.
That's awesome.
Outdoor exercise equipment.
Where, Bette Schmitt?
She's really excited about this.
I am. That was one of the things on the, uh, the list of things that people wanted, so I'm all, I'm thrilled.
Yeah, so Mary Cahill will be coming in August, Mary and the rest of the committee, Jesse, will be coming in August to, you know, give a formal presentation of what it all looks like.
That's awesome.
Isn't that cool?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of great things are happening.
Yes.
Hey, I have a question for you, Bridget, since you're the Lake Links liaison. I just asked my neighbor across the street who has one of those speed signs planned for his yard. And, um, he hadn't heard about it. And I said, well, would you like to know? And he said, well, yeah, I'd kind of like to know, but I don't know if he cares or not. But I don't know that the people whose yards this affects necessarily.
So the, the solar ones, you mean?
I think a s, one of the two solar signs is, is, is planned for his yard. So I just wonder if there's a way to kind of, I, I let him know, but it would be nice just to make sure we kind of.
Absolutely. Yeah, my understanding was that everybody was contacted, but I'll double check.
Like communicated, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any announcements, Scott?
More.
Anybody?
Um, now that the parade is done, the next thing on my list is the deer hunt, which happens in October through December. So if you are interested in having your property be one of the ones that is included with that, the team will be going around and collecting those yet again.
Do we vote on it every year or?
No, it's a contract we have for five years. This is our fifth year, just in case you're wondering.
I want this, thank you. All right.
We do vote on whether we allow relaxation of the firearms code or of the hunting restriction. So we certainly have authority.
All right, anything else? Last chance. Okay.
Hearing none, uh, meeting is adjourned.